Excuse me.
I like that, a little power.
Good evening. Today is the regular board meeting. It is Monday, June 17th. We have just come out of closed session. The board has been called to order and role has been taken. So shall we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the May 20 business meeting and closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Julia moves, Terry seconds. Call them, take the role.
Julie Beckman.
Aye.
Jerry Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. So acknowledged, thank you. For the receptions of visitors, usually we use the first reception of visitors for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. We are going to suspend board policy for tonight to enable some of our constituents who wish to address the board but cannot stay for the entire meeting. Who'd like to come forward?
I'm Julie Devine. I live at 1133 Sailor Street and I am the co-president of Hornet Swim Club. And I have one of our swimmers here and our coach. And we just really wanted to express our sincere appreciation and thank you for letting us rent the pool facilities for the past year and a half. It's made a huge difference to our club. And we're kind of low-key and I, because we say Hornet and we originated in Darien, I don't think people always know how much we represent in the Darien, in the Downers Grove community. So we just wanted to give you a heads up that we have a huge, huge Downers Grove portion of our team. Not just Downers Grove, but Woodridge, Bowling Brook, Darien. We have 60 people on our team that fall within District 99 boundaries. We're so excited about using the Downers Grove facilities. This district is fortunate to have two great pools with such capacity. I don't know, unless you know much about swimming, you probably don't know how many swimmers you can squeeze in one pool, but it's probably 250 to 300 swimmers over a three-hour period. And that makes a huge difference to us in our training. And it pays off in the success of our club. We took 10th place overall in state this year out of 112 teams. Yeah. So I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I just wanted to appreciate our thanks and we look forward to feeding some great swimmers into the high school program over the next couple of years and working with District 99 however we can to strengthen your swimming programs coming up. So I put together some information on our team for the board members. I know we just had a few minutes, so I didn't want to take a lot of time, but wanted to hand this out. So I don't know who I should.
Give it to the second.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and you squeezing us in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board?
Hi. My name's Steve Pavanato. I'm a dad of three kids here in Downers Grove. I live on Wisconsin Avenue over off of Belma. We've lived here for, since 98 and my kids have grown up in District 58 and two, I now have, now we have two kids in high school here. One of my sons is here tonight and he just, we'll briefly say hi to you as well. Two of my boys are on the Downers Grove North Swim Team and I have a daughter that's going to be going to Herit this year. And I just wanted to echo some of her comments just from the perspective as a parent of Downers North kids here in the district. And I worked with my boys over at Maple Hill Pool for years and years while they were little. And over the years, we experimented with some of the other swim clubs to grow them in the sport. And we never really found the right home for them for an off-season team until last year. My boys were looking to take their swimming to, they used to turn the next level to really excel and move up to a high caliber of swimming. So they looked at a whole bunch of area teams and settled on the Hornets team. And as a parent, I wanted to give you my perspective on that, why that was a great choice for us. The communication to this club to the parents has been exceptional. We get emails almost every day letting us know. Now, I'm not a swimmer. I grew up ski racing, but my boy is a swimmer and I fully support that. So I came to the sport not really knowing what it meant to qualify or what the cuts were or what any of it was. And so this is a parent-run organization, not a for-profit team, just a parent-run, elder parents or board members like Ms. Devine. And so I feel like the level of communication that I get from this club has just truly been exceptional. And the coaching has just blown me away. I get an opportunity to talk with the coaches when I have questions, just as a goofy parent. I really feel they're approachable and they're a great resource. One of the things that's happened for my boys is they've leapt forward an entire level in their swimming. We had the great pleasure to take both of them to the regional meet this year. One of my sons went to the state championships and then had the fantastic privilege to be on behalf of the Hornets and Nationals this year. And so I really have a lot of thanks to the Hornets for that. And I also wanted to thank you guys, the board, for allowing the Hornets to just use Downers Grove pools. It's a little less travel for me. I mean, I'd take my boys wherever they wanted to go, but you know, on those occasional nights when I actually want to spend some time with my wife, it's nice to just drop them over at North or South and get them back home. So I wanted to thank you deeply. It's been a great experience for me and my family swimming with the Hornets and it's great to have your folks support the Downers Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Anyone else? Hi, Nick.
I guess I'll call on my dad. Hello, I'm Nick. I also live on Wisconsin Street with my dad in 1952. And my main reason for being here tonight is to address you on behalf of the Hornets. I go to DGN, Downers Grove North, and I'm on the swim team in many leadership groups, but my favorite thing about the school is being on DGN's swim team. I've been captain for the team the past two years and with the support of my team, I hope to again this year. And through this, I've learned that the bonds in my team are probably one of the most important things that go through swimming. I can get better, I can enjoy myself swimming, but the people that I'm with really make the most impact. So far, many of my teammates have also joined Hornets and I feel like this has been a really positive thing on our entire team. It gives us, sorry?
Thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen. I see every single one of them whenever I go to practice over the summer here. I do have a lot of conflicts with the times, but my brother has put a lot of time into this Hornets swim team. He definitely enjoys the community aspect of it and it fills a really good role in my life because it keeps me working towards my goals as a swimmer and as a leader in the teams. So I just wanted to let you all know Hornets has been a really great experience for me, mainly because it's been such a great impact on my life. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board?
Thank you so much for letting me.
Oh, our pleasure. It's nice to be thanked.
If we can answer any questions for you, please let me know.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Recommendations and reports of the superintendent?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. The first report is about communications. As the board is aware, I mean, a commitment to begin maintaining metrics about all facets of our communications to evaluate how well we and how successfully we're getting the message out. And Mrs. Browning is going to make a report about several of those. She's also going to talk a little bit about where we're going in the future with communications. And then at the end of that report, we want to have a brief dialogue among the board to determine whether you want to continue the three open house nights during the school year in lieu of the seven Saturday mornings that we had very poor attendance at.
Well, if you put it that way.
So, Mrs. Browning, you are on.
Okay. As Mark said, just want to share with you data that we've collected over the school year. It serves as a snapshot of all the highlights that have taken place. And I'd also want to tell you about some of the changes that we're thinking about making an opportunity to improve based on what we've seen this past year. We just want to make it more valuable and useful to people as we move forward. So I'd welcome your questions at any point if you want to interrupt me and ask a question. That would be great. As you know, one of the primary functions of this office is to continue to promote all of the great things that our students are doing, our staff is doing. So if you'll see on the media coverage, you'll see the green bar and we want to continue to keep track of all the positive stories that we have in the news. And with the help of Joanne, we keep track of that weekly. And the email that you receive from Mark, you get that link and you can link in there and see exactly what the stories are. So many of the stories are ones that we've actively pitched. We call the media directly and some of them are ones that we created. So I put together a collection of the ones from the Downers Grove reporter in front of you. So we have the opportunity every other month, sometimes more frequently based on their needs, to make contributions to that Community Voice column. And we've just been able to highlight different topics and different people to really show the different leaders each time, to show the breadth of knowledge that we have. So instead of focusing on one leader such as Mark, you know, we've taken the opportunity to show and showcase a variety of people. So that's what we've done with that. It's been a very valuable tool to us. In addition to the external coverage that we have, we also continued to publish our monthly newsletter. We published 10 of those this year. We start out strong, as you can see the numbers, people get excited probably for the start of the school year, but then it starts to dip a little bit. And as you'll see, we're down a little bit this year, but we still average about 1,200 views a month that read our newsletter. So because readership is down a little bit, we're planning to supplement the newsletter in the coming year with different tools to keep people more engaged throughout the school year. We're going to be launching a D99 FYI blog to get the news out immediately when it happens. Instead of batching it all during the month and then, you know, issuing a gigantic newsletter, we'll issue it as it happens and subscribe people to that, ask them to subscribe. We already had some subscribe from our last newsletter reaching out to that. That'll keep the news from getting stale as well, so looking forward to that. And we're also planning to create another annual printed report, the D99 Insights that we mailed out a couple of years ago. That was pretty effective for us, so we're going to do that again in November to coincide with the Illinois Report Card information. Also planning to publish some board briefs. So immediately after the meeting, as soon as the video goes up, we'll publish a memo to give people an update of what happened and maybe link that to what has happened on the video to show the time, you know, of a particular vote or something. So we'll want to keep the momentum and keep the readership up with those different types of things. As far as the videos, the video that's being taped right now, we had over 2,000 views of all the videos throughout the school year. Obviously, as you can see, the recognition ceremony was the most popular. We have students and that's when people tune in. So we are going to get on the schedule with the video supplier and have all of our recognition ceremonies taped next year. So we'll look forward to that and we'll plan to keep taping next year as well, if you think that's a good idea, which we think it is. Social media is probably our biggest communication highlight of the year. It's this two-way communication channel and it continues to grow. In the pie chart there, we have down 839 for South and let's see, 1149 for North and those have even gone up as of the time that we punched this in a couple of days ago. So it just continues to grow. And actually, the South High is not an accurate total reflection of South because we also have a Downers Grove South Athletics and Activities page. So we're planning to combine those next year and we'll tell everybody, hey, just merge so we can just have more news and I think that that will continue to keep people involved. Our Twitter followers are up. And then I just put in a chart directly from the Facebook website on showing the demographics. And as you'll see, it skews young, which is typical for all social media, but it does show that social media is for everyone. So you see that all ages are representing, or are represented. Then finally, on the last page there, the social media highlights, you can see, you know, over 4,800 people saw the post for graduation, that South High one, just a quick. Probably John Albrecht took a snapshot with his phone and uploaded it to Facebook and people get excited to see that. It's fun to see caps in the air. Another successful event was live streaming of the graduations this year at both North High and South High. Over 8,000 people tuned in to see that. And another statistic that we received was that the number of live concurrent views. There were 150 people at North and 315 people at South who were watching live the graduation. So, you know, just imagine expanding the gym. Now, I don't know if it would be less if it was outside, but it's just a benefit of this feature. So we'll be looking to do more of that next year. And again, just some other stats, the Mustang Boys Volleyball Championship, over 4,800 people. North High had a student whose artwork will be displayed at the Capitol, you know, over 600 people liked that and saw that. The North High lip dub, over 500 people, over 1,000 people. So if you take a look at these statistics, I mean, 8,000 compared to, you know, 1,200 a month with our newsletter, this is just a great resource for us to be using and really we'll be focused on this in the next year, you know, finding ways to even further develop it. The key is to find things that people care about and so we'll continue to do and work on that. Finally, the website visitors, this is pretty self-explanatory, but what I neglected to put down here was that use of the phone, people accessing it through mobile devices has just grown. So last year, we saw 6% were accessing our website through their phones and now we're up to 14%. So there's an app for that. How do we capture that? We're working on developing an application for District 99 and that's, we're working on that with School Messenger, our broadcast provider, and so we'll be launching that in the fall. So in addition to the blog and the annual report and the app, other initiatives that we're working on are an all-staff intranet. The project name for it is Inside 99 right now. It's just for internal staff to further enhance our communications with staff. Alumni efforts, you know, we've taken the time, we've gathered all these emails and we want to make sure that we include them in key messages, like inviting them to homecoming events that we may have with the foundation, sending them the annual report. A big event that's upcoming is the South High's 50th anniversary. That we'll be making plans this year, forming a committee, and so that will be another event that they'll want to hear about, definitely. And also finally, we'll just look for more ways to livestream our concerts and those are being livestreamed, but just further partner with Cable 99 as well. This was the first time graduation that we livestreamed at South. So that was pretty noteworthy. So we'll just be looking for more opportunities like that as we become more experienced and just to be able to fully use our tools. So that's kind of the communications program. And then just wanted to talk about the open houses for next year because we have set some dates, November 25th, May 10th, or March 10th and May 12th. Just thinking, you know, is that the best use of our time? You know, it is a separate night, it's another obligation for you to come instead of having it paired with a meeting. So I think that it worked well, but interested in your feedback and just thinking about that and the format as well.
So there's really two questions. One is, are there any questions about the presentation?
Sure.
And then, which I have one.
Okay, sure.
What do we tweet about?
You know, I've been just tweeting about meetings and board meetings. So I'm sure we could, we could get a little more interesting than that.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You know, we could be tweeting 24/7, probably. But, you know, it is connected to our news feature, so we just need to up those efforts. Yep.
Were there other questions about the presentation or comments?
I had one and I forgot what it was.
Lovely presentation. Okay, so on to the board meeting, I mean, the meeting with the public.
So the district open houses have replaced the Bagels with the Board, the Saturday obligations. And as you know, so it's a recognition program followed by the district open house. So all of the administrators are partnered with the board members and then people exit and we try to capture them and talk with them and...
Do we have any idea how many contacts we've made?
You know, I mean... That's a good question. I don't have metrics on that exactly, but just anecdotal evidence that we have interfaced with people, I guess.
I mean, Rod's not here. Not that, not that it wasn't really exciting to talk to the technology area, but I don't think in the three events, we had anybody who came and talked to us.
Right.
So I'm just wondering how the rest of you felt about that. Did you make a lot of contacts? I mean...
We had quite a few people that came to the first one.
Right. Well, I mean, I'm saying people came, but...
The cross supporters came en masse to the first one.
Right. But I mean, did they come and talk to each area of expertise?
I don't know about that.
I mean...
Not a lot. We had some people... I did finance with Mark. We have some, I wouldn't say a lot.
But I will say this, I was never really happy with the Bagels with the Board, only because, and I think at the very beginning, I think it was probably a good, you know, it was a nice idea, you know, that we were trying to reach out or whatever, but it was just not very effective. What I like about this is that even if there aren't a lot of contacts, we're highly visible and it shows that we're making a huge effort because we have all of those captive people there that are there for the awards, okay? They choose whether or not they want to stop or they're going to, you know, they're going to go home, but they see us. And that's, that's a huge, you know, it's, I think it's huge.
I don't have anything against that. I'm just thinking also that, you know, granted, it is mostly our parents and our students that are there, but we also need to include our community members. And a lot of them don't maybe know or come to an event like that because they feel it's just for our parents and students. So I, my, my other side of that is, you know, are we going to do something that would include them? Because really, when you think of the numbers, our general community members are much larger than our parent group.
Sure.
Sure. But I suppose that's, that again is key with communication and making sure that the community knows that there will be an open house that starts at, yeah.
Right. And we do advertise and we don't do any other advertising, but we do advertise in the reporter.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm just... Well, it's on the website. Yeah. I'm just saying that I'm not sure that some of our...
Bagels with the Board was intentional just for everybody and we advertised that quite a bit too. It's hard to, it's hard to get people... So I don't think any one event, any one thing we do is really going to be, and this is probably true with so many of the ways organizations and people communicate these days, is it's really hard to find one silver bullet where you're really going to nail it. But this is, I think, an important piece of what we do. And so I remember talking when I first came on the Board about importance of, instead of trying to set up something new and different and additional necessarily that people would have to come to, we really needed to make more of an effort to meet people where they were. And so that was the genesis, I think, of this idea of yours with these open houses and I think it's been very successful. I share your experience in that, I don't know how it's we'd set it up. It makes sense that we set up, we set up different tables to specialize in different aspects of what we're doing. So if you do have a question about that, you can come to those tables, but by and large, most of the conversation are people just approaching us about whatever it is that they're concerned about, not necessarily one of those things. And I think that's fine. So my inclination would be to continue doing it and certainly we, we're always open to new ideas too, right? Anybody has any additional ideas, but I think this is, this is comparative to what we were doing. This is like, I don't know, the math on it, but it's got to be in the thousandth percentile better. You know, I mean, well...
With the exception of a few.
Right. Right. A few that you would, you would know, you know, and they were the same few too, right? Right? So at any rate, this is, this is an opportunity. Maybe we can, I don't know how we can, I don't know that anybody's out there really feeling intimidated that I'm not going to come to this open house because there's this thing going on with the awards ahead of time. I'm not that concerned with that.
No, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I just think it's not something that they would come to. You know what I'm saying?
Well, this is a good time. I think it's an, it's an evening, people are home. But I tell you, it's hard to get people to come to a meeting on a Monday evening. And so asking people to come out an additional night is going to be difficult. This is why I think our videoing of our meetings is so important. You said we had 2,000 views. Those are 2,000 opportunities that wouldn't have happened if we weren't recording these meetings. And so I think this is, this is about as successful as we can hope for and I'm sure you'll come up with even greater ideas going forward, not to put any pressure on you. But so far, I'd like to continue doing what we're doing.
If you do have a better idea, let us know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it's really important though that we do have our recognition night for our students separate from any other thing that we had because for one, it was making the evening too long.
Right.
And, and I think it also makes our students feel a little more special maybe to have their own night to recognize them.
Good.
But...
Great. Well, thank you for the feedback.
So we're hearing to proceed.
So mark your calendar, November 25th, March 10th and May 12th.
I've already got another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transition program?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. As the board is aware, we've been on an odyssey for over a year, trying to find a suitable location for an excellent program we have in the district to transition students from high school to adult roles and responsibilities. It was previously at an elementary school in Westmont. We were told very, rather abruptly, we could not have it there anymore and we've been working on a location, as the board is aware, for close to, over a year now, actually. Now we're at a point where we're moving forward and getting it ready to use and we're going to have a report tonight about that. And the report will be given by Mr. Shock, Mr. Whitehead, Mr. Colleger and Mr. Stalen. And I just do want to point out, this will be Mr. Shock's last board meeting and a long career with District 99 and we wish him very well in his retirement. It's also Mr. Whitehead's last board meeting before he goes to his next venture, we also wish him well. So gentlemen, you're on.
Claws before you even start.
Pressure. Pressure's on to go out, find colors. We're rapidly completing the formal closing of the property on Bernard Street, or Vennard Street, as I learned earlier it's pronounced.
Either way.
And it's been a long odyssey, as you know, but we haven't been sitting still while this process has been going on and we just want to bring the board up to speed a little bit about what we're doing, what's taking place. As I had mentioned to the board a few weeks ago, or maybe even a couple of months ago, there's a lot of work to do and we've, we've been accelerating that speed so that we can, we can get the program into the new building as quickly as possible. Evan's going to talk a little bit about the program and I'll bring up a concept plan on what we think this building is going to look like when we're done with it. And Jim Colleger is going to talk about the schedule and then Mark's going to talk about the financing of it. And I'm going to let Evan go from here on. That is a picture of Westmont South School where the program rented space for a number of years before being, before losing our lease and moving into the two high schools until we could find the property and renovate. And that is a picture of the property that we're acquiring.
Evan? Thank you, Marty. Tonight, I'm going to briefly go over the program, the program components and talk a little bit about how we got to where we are now and moving into our new facility. To begin, I just want to thank everyone that was involved in this project. It really was a collaborative effort between multiple departments because for those of you that have done any type of project that's similar to this, you know that it takes a lot of people to put a lot of time and effort behind the scenes to make something like this happen. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved with that because without them, we couldn't get to this place now. And that includes the parents and the staff as well and also the building administrators because we asked a lot of people to be flexible over this past year or so, from the time that, as Dr. McDonald... over this past year or so, from the time that, as Dr. McDonald said, that we were informed kind of at the last minute that we wouldn't have our facility in Westmont, to what we would do for this upcoming school year and what that looked like. And during the whole time, there was a lot of, a lot of things we were kind of finding out by discovery. We didn't have a lot of concrete ideas because it was unexpected. But everyone was very cooperative in helping us to get where we are now. That being said, the last public piece of information that we talked about was really moving forward when we were looking at a previous property, that we had moved to go to eminent domain. At that time, there was a conversation between all of us involved about what would be next, because we knew at any time, the eminent domain process could end, and we could possibly go into the new property and start renovating when we were able to obtain it. So, that being said, we really did do a lot of work behind the scenes in gathering our team together, the transition staff, and also working with Marty and his team, and also talking to Mark Stalen about what this project would actually look like, given the size and the type of dollars that we had in the district. As we moved on through the eminent domain process, there was a lot of communication between the parents and myself. And unfortunately, we couldn't be as open as we would have liked at times, because we were in negotiations with the current property, and also, we wanted to have a Plan B as well. And that being said, it brought us to a point in which we found another property that looked like it would allow us to get in. And once that point happened, we really had to be a little bit more secretive, probably, than we would have liked to, because we were also looking at negotiations with that owner as well. So, it was a very interesting time. I know there are times in which parents wanted to receive some more information. I know there was a lot of frustration going on, and it seemed like there was a lack of communication. But it really was for the good of a project like this, so we could get to where we are today. That being said, in the new location, we're really looking at multiple components. It'll have a kitchen, multiple conference rooms, additional storage space, offices for staff, which include our lead teacher, Mike Dela Maria, and also the teachers on board as well. Also, space for our teacher assistants, and also for our vocational coordinator as well. We'll have a nursing station in there. Currently, we don't have any students that do need nursing assistance. But in the future, if that does happen, we'll have space for that and have a nurse available. Have wireless internet. There'll be off-street parking for students to drop off and pick up, and also potential for recreational facilities as well in the rear future. Also, this particular property will allow for accessibility via ADA, because we will be on one floor. We won't have the use of an elevator. So, therefore, anytime we have students that use a wheelchair, or parents that are coming in, or anyone else from the community, we'll all be on one floor. So, that eliminates a lot of other challenges that we could potentially see in the future with having to install an elevator or either a wheelchair lift. And finally, under accessibility, the building's gonna be very secure. One of the components that we talked about as we were designing what this new building would look like was the safety and security of these students, because this will be a facility that's off-campus. It really is an additional attendance center. So, therefore, the safety and security is very important, because these particular students are very mobile. They're going in and out of the building at different times of the day. There are staff members that are traveling with them. And with the amount of traffic that's going in and out, we want to make sure that only the people that are supposed to be in that building are there. So, that's gonna be key as well. And finally, the location of this facility. One of the things that we really worked on and worked on, that was a big challenge, but we wanted to make sure that was, one, within District 99's attendance boundaries. And, two, that also with that, a lot of our students use public transportation as part of, one of the components of their program. And we wanted to make sure that they had access to public transportation wherever we would find a location, and this does fit that. And finally, this really is best practice. You know, as Dr. McDonald said, that this is a very good program. And we've had a lot of people come and look at what our program does. We've had a lot of people come and do site visits prior to them being in the program this year, because of, you know, really, everyone was aware of what we do in the program and how it really benefits all of our students and has a great reputation. Now, moving into a facility, not only will we have a program that's great, but we'll also have a state-of-the-art facility as well, that really will be, you know, what is best practice for transition students, which is being outside of the high school. These students are beyond, you know, the four years of a student that's 14 to 18 or 19 years old. They are adults. So, the type of programming and the experience they need, they need to be away from their, the other high school students, because they're adults. So, with that, this allows us to happen. And it's my belief, along with the belief of the rest of the team, that once everything's in place and the new building is there, we're gonna get those same visits about our program, the programmatic components, as we did. We'll have the same visits to see what this building looks like.
The collaborative work that I mentioned, from a design standpoint, I'm sorry, get that centered better here, included TH staff, and they're represented in the audience, Mike Dela Maria and Amy Semler. And they're off for the summer, but they put up with our design work again this afternoon for two and a half hours.
Thank you.
Several months ago, we started the concept plan to make sure that this building would work for what we needed. Let me reduce the size just a little bit, and I'll, it'll fit on there a little better. And it's a 10,000-square-foot building, and we need about 7,000 square feet.
That's worth it.
The rooms that we're contemplating mimic or exceed what we had at a Westmont school. It was rather restrictive to the program. And we're certainly restricted to what the space is now in the two campuses. There is room for growth, indicated on the left side on the open area. And in fact, we're contemplating a fourth classroom in the next two to four years, based on the growth of the program. But this facility has, as depicted, three classrooms. It's got offices, which the TH doesn't currently have. It's got conference rooms, which they don't have. It's got private washroom facilities, which they don't have. And a space for their business of, what do we, paper shredding.
So, we are still doing that?
Yes. There will be some changes to this layout, but nothing major. But the kitchen area where the kids are taught how to cook for themselves will be modified somewhat. But it's two kitchen areas for students. And that's in the middle of the layout. And then an eating area, and then an open space for group activities. And then you see the classrooms up in the upper right-hand corner and down in the left center there. The open area has mechanical space and future growth. And again, we're looking at the budget and the growth pattern, and we'll determine shortly if we want to put that fourth classroom in now or come back in a couple of years. You saw a picture of the outside of the building. We're contemplating some exterior work and some site work. But that's gonna take some conversations administratively and with the village. This is in a TIF area, and we're not sure exactly what the village will require of us with respect to site improvements. But we've got that, we know that that may be a situation that will work itself out in the next few months. With that, Jim's gonna talk about the schedule, the most important part of this report, I think, because it shows you what we have left to do and how we're gonna get to the completion point. And there are a significant number of stages of work yet to do to get this rolling. But we're on our way. We're working on the design drawings, and we'll be out to bid shortly. And Jim will talk about that.
Thanks, Marty. There's five phases with the schedule. Phase one was concept designs. We confirmed short- and long-term program requirements, and we've completed that. We are now in phase two, which is June 3rd to June 19th, on design development. And as Marty said earlier, we met again today for two and a half hours. So, we're past the review, and we're looking to get some documentation back from the design group from White and Company. And hopefully, in August, we'll have bid documents ready for releasing and for public bidding on August 19th. That'll bring us to phase three, which is our bidding, August 22nd to September 16, key dates, targeting September 6th as a bid opening and an analysis of the bids, and then bring it to the board for acceptance of the bids September 9th or 23rd. Which will move us right into phase four, which is the exciting part, the construction, site work and interior build-out, starting September 10th or 23rd, and going to New Year's Eve. Hopefully, construction will be complete that night, so we can bring in the new year. So, that's the target date for construction. Phase four is December 31st. Bringing us to phase five, which is move-in. We've got January 1st to January 20th, a couple of weeks there, three weeks. And 21st, that's our target. That's what we're looking to move in and occupy. So, realistically, we pushed this a little bit more, just we always know that there's gonna be licensing from the village and permits. And so, we put a little bit of padding to make sure that we cover that. So, realistic date right now for construction finishing, December 31st, and then moving in two to three weeks after that. So, over the Christmas break, we'd be moving some furniture and getting everyone in there to occupy for second semester. To Mark Stalen on the layout costs.
And about the cost piece here, the, we never really had a fixed budget for this project, because it's a whole new area for us. We never really knew exactly what this facility would cost, although we did have an idea of what we expected the cost to be for the first property that we had identified, and had some conceptual work done for that. And so, we had an idea of what that cost would be. So, when this property came available, we hit it, I think it was a week and a half after it came on the market, and pretty much started working right away. Nothing has been easy with this one. It was, had industrial use in the past, but it wasn't anything severe. We had to make sure and check out that it would be an appropriate area for this to occur. Also, that the, there were no serious problems with any contamination or EPA issues on the property. We are satisfied that it's in good shape for that. It's, the person who owns it now doesn't hold the deed to it, because he's in a special purchase arrangement with the true deed holder. So, it's gonna be a double closing, and we're working on setting that up. So, you know, every time we, I think we have it pretty well nailed, there's a little twist in it. But we do think we're in good shape right now to meet the timeline that Jim just presented. Now, in terms of cost, this is, at this level, we've only done the concept plan. They haven't really drawn out all of the specs, and really, the design work has to still happen. But we think we're in a pretty good location in terms of overall cost. We think the total cost, we know that we already have a firm contract for $600,000. And we know most of those, some of those costs above have already been incurred with legal fees and just the environmental studies and the borings and analysis of that information. And so, we know a lot of these costs are fixed. But when we get into the estimated site and structure improvements, again, those are just based on conceptual drawings, which are based on average square foot costs. And we think those are realistic and might give us a little bit of a contingency in there as well. So, we're pretty comfortable with that, a number of 1.2 million. And then a total estimated cost for really securing it, somewhere in the area of 1.855 million. And a couple of things that are not in this estimate yet, and I think they may be presented to you at a later point, would be some exterior improvements, a replacement of the parking lot, perhaps some exterior finish on the building itself would be added. But we also believe that there would be some possibility of getting a recovery from TIF dollars through the village. And we haven't had any really in-depth conversations with them, because we haven't had title to this thing yet. And so, we are now going to be talking to them and taking it to the next level, but getting serious about, and actually, we have a really good idea of all of our other costs. So, we have some quotes, or at least some good ideas of what those costs would be, so we can now talk to them at a much more realistic level. So, we intend to do that. But right now, this is, would actually, I mean, with this number, if we did nothing to the exterior, other than repair the damage we do when we put in the water and sewer lines, we would be able to operate at this level. But we think there probably will be some more enhancements. We don't know the net cost of that. But in the master site plan, in the sub-fund, in our site and construction fund, which is designated for master site work, the origination of those dollars were, of course, from the Woodridge property, 14.8 million dollar proceeds. After all the other things we've done, we still have 2.1 million left, almost 2.2 million left. And so, we have another $336,000 that is still, I won't say it's available. It is available. We're trying not to spend it. There's a million other things that we'd like to do with site. But right now, we look at that as a contingency to this project, if we have something unexpected. We are gonna do a second, an alternate for a fourth classroom, and also possibly a shower. We're looking at that in the facility for circumstances when they need that with certain students. And so, we're looking at that. And we'll put those out as alternates. Those would be enhancements that they don't currently have. But we're really looking at that. We think now would be the time to hit that possibly, when we do this all at once. And we think, actually, in my opinion, I think it will probably be something we recommend to you. But we need to see where all these numbers come in, when we actually put them out to bid, and see how that works. So, we just want to let you know, we have adequate resources to do this. We're really excited about, so we don't legally own it yet, but we're really close to it. This is gonna be, I think, a model facility. I think we already have a good program. We have excellent staff. We have excellent programming right now. But I think having it in a separate facility like this, designed for it, I think will be just a wonderful diamond for our school district to have that. One of the things I'd like us to consider, and I'll, you know, put it out there, is possibly bringing in some other students if we have that fourth classroom. So, that'll be part of that cost analysis, and see if we can bring in other students from other districts. So, there's a lot here that we can do with this. To me, I think it's very exciting that we've gone this way with this program.
That's great.
I think that's it. Any questions?
What a great presentation.
Yeah. It's very exciting.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody for your commitment and your time and giving up your summer and everything. We'll open it up, we'll open it up for questions. I have one, too. I'm gonna start. Can you remind me, how many students do we currently have enrolled in this and program? And what's our capacity now with the plans as they are?
We have 42 students enrolled for 2013.
And with this plan, how many, what's the capacity for, as it's sketched out now?
Capacity with three rooms is 45. About 15 in a room, so about 45. So, we're about at capacity for this year.
For this year.
I do have a question. With regard to the TIF, how does that work, since this is being taken off the tax rolls, right, since it belongs to us?
It's still located in the TIF and eligible for expenditures for enhancing that...
The Oasis plan for along Ogden Avenue dollars that the village has set aside out of the TIF to encourage property owners to improve their facades.
Or we're still eligible for it, even though we're tax exempted?
We believe so.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
It could be.
We've had an initial meeting with the village and their attorney, and they believe it is eligible. They don't know which particular cost would be eligible, and it may be an subjective decision, because it is, I mean, that is an element here that's kind of unusual, is that this is not, you know, we'll be taking it off the tax rolls. But really, it's, in essence, I know what you're saying. There'll be other taxes that'll be going into the TIF, or have already gone into the TIF, that will be used to pay for this, so.
Actually, I've been, I was actually on the Oasis board that had approved dollars for this building for another owner.
For another owner, right. When it was still on the tax rolls.
A couple of quick questions. The administrative offices on the plan, well, those have some sort of windows or something to the corridor? Just a question. Visibility, just, and...
This is an odd structure. It's got...
It's got opaque glass windows in it now, as you know, Mr. Davenport.
Correct.
And they're up high. And we will convert those to windows.
When I was really looking at it, as administrative offices, being on a monitor, the comings and goings in the corridor, just was curious if that was part of the program.
That door that is facing the hallway, that you see on the north? We discussed that today, and putting a door in with a very large window.
I wonder if that'll be enough, but that's something, that's something for you all to talk about.
Yeah, the area left of that would be an area where you would consider putting another one. That's what you're talking about, Mike, right?
And then in terms of, in terms of the schedule, the bidding, the timeline for the bidding seems pretty aggressive. I mean, is that, who decided on that timeline?
Working with our architects and engineers and our construction manager, who will be running the project, we've come up with that timeline. And as Jim had said, we've got some contingency in there. But we're looking at fast-tracking not only the design, but the construction to some extent. It's not a difficult build-out, but there'll be a full complement of contractors, probably 10 to 13 contracts that we'll ask the Board of Education to award. We're going to prime contract it instead of general contractors, so we'll run the project ourselves. But we feel very, very strongly that that timeline will work for us.
I was just specifically just looking at the, from the time we let bids out to the time we receive, just seemed kind of tight, and didn't know where that recommendation was coming from.
Well, one of the things we're looking at is phasing the bids, get the bids out for the long lead items right away. And, you know, if there's no site work, that really speeds some things up too.
And how do we get away without, I mean, I have to believe that zoning is going to require us to do some things with parking and, on the site, above and beyond what we currently have.
We have a contingency in case that happens. The village has been very tight-lipped about just what they would require of us. They want to see the drawings first and then tell us if they work or don't work.
Yeah, well, there's going to be some things we're going to have to do.
Yeah, right.
And then about the cost estimates, were these cost estimates something that we put together in-house, or were these something that were also coming from our architects and engineers?
It's a mix of in-house, me putting some of those numbers together, and our architects and engineers, and also the construction managers. The construction manager has an estimating department. Mark had mentioned a square foot price. We've gone beyond that. This is material and labor. So it's, this is as accurate as an estimate can get at this point in time.
Well, I have to confess that it seems a little higher than what I thought it might be in terms of the build-out. But, yeah, it's just good to put on record right now, so that when the bidders are turning things in, they understand it.
As you know, it's a shell of a building, so there's nothing inside. I mean, we even have to bring utilities and water. It does look high for a build-out of an existing structure.
And 50,000 is probably enough for furniture and equipment? That seemed maybe...
We have all of the furniture and equipment from the old facilities that will also be used.
Of course. Excellent, all right. Very good.
I have a question about the shredding program, which has been in existence for a few years. Are we, will that be able to grow, or will we be able to add other businesses for the students? Do we know with this new space? Is there anything?
I think that's some of the reason why we have that extra space. If we need to expand in the programs we can, it gives us the option, the option to do that moving forward. Doesn't put us in a situation where we can't grow if we would like to.
Be excited. You've been able to operate it even in the schools, the shredding business?
Limited, hasn't been as much as we'd like to, but...
My heart goes out to you. Oh, my gosh. Good, because I think it's such a great idea. I'm sorry, one more question about the shredding business. Is that open to anyone, or is that strictly business to business, the shredding?
It's open to anyone.
Ooh, okay. I have a lot of shredding.
Yeah, exactly. Add another room just for me.
Cleaning out our attic.
This is a very exciting question.
Any other questions or comments? Mark, did you want to talk a little bit about expanding the program? I thought I heard you say at the end, Mark Stalen?
About expanding?
About opening it up to other students, other schools?
Well, I think, I have had a conversation with SASED, and they said they would be interested. They want to see it first. I think everyone wants to see it. And I think when we get further down the road, even before we approve maybe a fourth, I think we're really close to the three classroom limit now. So in my mind, it's going to be much more economical to have all the trades in there now, putting on one additional room, and perhaps that shower, if we can make it work. But we kind of need to see the cost of what that additional piece would be at this point, and maybe have to phase it in a few years down the road if it becomes too expensive. The unknown of what will happen on the outside with the village and what requirements will be there would also have to play into that. You know, how much, how many dollars we'll actually have to spend for that. So I'd like to do that, that's why, I guess my, I'm eager to try that, but I'm still holding back on that because we don't know. Still a few questions for us on the outside.
That's exciting.
Other questions or comments? IMRF?
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. The new statutes require the school district to post projected changes in salaries for IMRF administrators on the website six days before the board meeting. My goal is to report that that was done in compliance with the statutes.
Mr. Facilities?
Yes, master facility plan, and I'll start this, and I think Mr. Collier is going to take it over. Is that correct, Jim?
That is correct.
Our strategic plan requires us to develop a master facility plan. In addition to, which is different than the master site plan, which was pretty much outside, and a master maintenance plan, which is about maintaining the infrastructure and capital assets that we have, this is sort of a larger vision of the future. And before we proceed, because we have different options for proceeding, we wanted to have a discussion with the board about where the board sees us going, and what the board thinks we should do in terms of this concept. So Jim's going to talk a little bit about that first, what, sort of a general overview, and then we'd sort of like to ask, well, we'd like to ask the board for some input about our ideas. So Jim?
Real quick, I just want to give a quick update on the master maintenance plan that hasn't been forgotten, and just wanted to bring it back and give you an update. We're reviewing the results this week from the audits from the buildings from White Architects. So those results are going to be inputted in our new school, new program planning direct. So exciting to see all that information this week, and I'll have more information to bring back to you soon. Master site plan, facility goal 2.3A, to be completed in 2013, 2014. Two components, facility upgrades and modifications to meet needs of future educational program changes. So I just, I wanted to introduce this back to the board and state that we've already had some preliminary conversations with district administration. From the facilities aspect, trying to take a proactive approach to prepare, to see what the future brings as far as 21st century education. Getting input from the schools to start with, and then expanding on that to staff and others, even community, to see what kind of input we get as we look into a vision of what this looks like in the 21st century. We already got some great input back from the administration and the school district. So for me, getting the information early and seeing how that coincides with the facilities, if it becomes a reality, putting those together and looking at it from a cost side of it, what will this cost be if we ever do a facility plan intertwining those? So that's my drive that I brought to Mark, and we had a couple of meetings, and we met with a group of people from both schools. So how do we align these for future facility changes? And that's kind of looking forward to going at this year and working more with us, and if we get some support where we can continue on doing this work.
I guess in my position, I've been through these studies before. It's one thing I had a lot of experience before I came here, is large-scale construction projects. And as I indicated in the cover memo to the board, there really, there's sort of two general ways to go about this. One is sort of a small scale, looking at things that we can do gradually over time, financing those through operating cost. We've had good experience doing that. The second access point at South High, the science labs at South High, the HVAC work at North High last summer. A lot of the, you know, now we're up to well over a million dollars a year in capital projects. And so we have been making good progress in terms of improving our buildings and doing it in an incremental way. The other side of the coin, though, is to take sort of a larger view, get more people involved, and sort of dream a larger vision of what we want the place to look like. I think we did some of that with the master site plan. We weren't able to afford all the ideas from the master site plan, although we did get a tremendous amount of work done. And I guess I would advocate for the larger view, getting people involved and looking at what we'd really like District 99 to look like in 10 years. What, how it would serve students, how it would affect the educational programs that we expect to have. There's been quite a bit of change with regard to technology in schools. And if you, you know, some of the meetings that we've had recently, through IASB, we've gone to schools where they have, for instance, large open areas where kids can go and have internet access. They don't really have any structure, but they're there understanding that that's a way kids learn and network. And they can be supervised relatively effectively and efficiently. So, you know, those are the kind of ideas that I think we should begin to consider, whether we have a plan to pay for them now or not, is not as important as having the idea or the vision of where we want to go in the future. So I sort of wanted to get your input about, is that a viable place for us to go? Because if we do that, people will ask us how we're going to pay for it, and we don't know yet. But I do believe part of our responsibility is to be visionary and consider what we want the system to look like someday. And it may, it may change because things, you know, right now with the technology, things do change. But I do feel that's part of our responsibility to have a larger picture than incremental.
I agree with you, Dr. McDonald. I think if we, if we think about outside the box and go further, it's really a good thing.
I have a question. With regard to long-range planning, I'm assuming we're talking to people outside our purview for best practices, and I'm sure there's a lot of visionary thinking that we're going to have access to, correct?
We would work with an architectural consultant. And there is a, clearly a field out there for people who, you know, more design and idea people. But ideally, this was a trap that I fell into along with others years ago, before I worked here. It's really important for us to tell the architects what we want and make sure they understand our vision versus the architects telling us what they want and convincing us it's right.
I was thinking also about curriculum people.
No, absolutely.
And we need to be looking ahead to all of that too, because I'm sure there'll be some...
We have a lot of resources within our own staff.
Right, right. Who are, because that's really going to drive what the board does too. I think we need to have some picture of what best practices really look like.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just meeting with the group of people a couple of weeks ago, just the input and the ideas that came in, it's amazing what they're already thinking about.
All right, great.
And it's promising to see what we can possibly do. So just gathering that has been exciting for me at this point.
So your steps are having focus groups within our, our different groups, and then getting that plan kind of together?
Well, yeah, some, yeah, some, some structure like that. There would be opportunities for many different groups of people to give input. And that would be distilled down in a similar fashion to the way we did the strategic plan.
Okay, all right.
And at that point, the input is relatively abstract. It eventually has to get to the point where it's a concrete structure. But the idea would be that we would, we would be rather expansive in the people that would participate, which would take some time and take some structure. And there would be some cost, not incredible, but there would be some cost, more than the four or five of us sitting around saying, we need air conditioning.
Right, right. Well, you know, I was just wondering what kind of a timeline or timeframe, and how many people it's going to involve and all that, yeah?
Come back to you with that next month.
Okay.
I think really you're looking at a two-tier, or a two-track system. One is physical footprint, what we want the physical footprint of our schools to look like in 10 to 20 years. I think we have somewhat of a vision left over from what has been begun. From a curricular standpoint, I think you're looking at something like, all right, we have study hall now. We've always had study hall. Is there something different that we can do with that time, whether it's restructuring the day, whether it's, you know, having had study hall down in the dungeon at North, do we knock that out and do something different? You know, so I think it's a matter of working with what we have, but I think that curricular vision is important. For instance, do we just say now that, you know, study halls are gone, and we do something different with that, that open model concept that you were talking about? You know, I would advocate as an educator and a parent that, that we have the hardwiring of technology there to be flexible in the future, because that dynamic changes so oftenly that education is usually playing catch-up, as you know. So I don't want to go just with the latest trend, but I like to have that infrastructure there, technologically speaking, that allows us the flexibility to use what is best for us in this district. So I think those are two things that need to be looked at, and some of it will involve money and some of it won't. And I think the biggest thing that our parents and our community members should know, we're getting away from that assembly line model of education from John Dewey in the 1920s. And what that looks like 10 or 20 years from now, we don't really know yet. It's not really concrete. So I think we're still in a state of flux that if we have some things there and ready, you know, that would be, that would serve us well, but, you know, like career and college ready, are we bringing things back that we used to have? Are we not bringing, so that's really a big question. It's really a big question.
Well, no surprise, being a planner myself, that I would support the idea of looking at doing some planning. As an architect, I always need to know what my client's budget is, you know, to have some idea of how to design something. It's good to dream, it's good to dream. And clearly, there's, there's a lot of things that we could probably do with our facilities to improve them. I think what's, you know, our, the way we're, the way we're going to get the most support for doing these sorts of things, though, is that there has to be some sort of correlation between advances in education. I mean, that's, that's the goal. And so those things that we, we talk about, you know, have to have that strong correlation. And I guess, I would say that I'm skeptical of the idea that we would, we could potentially dream real big about some things. If the money's not there to do it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to spend a whole lot of time talking about it, other than the fact that sometimes you can identify, so you have those big dreams, and then you start looking at those pieces that you can accomplish going into it. But understand that, I think in the, in the short term, looking at the optics of the master site plan improvements that we've done, I have a, I have a hard time believing that the community would support a lot of additional funds for doing any sort of large-scale projects to improve the facilities. That's, I'm just being really honest in terms of what I see short-term. Long-term, though, and this is, we're talking about a long-term master facility plan, we, I think we'd be foolish not to, not to think about those long-term needs. And maybe there are, as we talk about incremental things and how good we've been at taking on some of these, these projects, we may find ourselves, you know... some of these, these projects, we may find ourselves, you know, being able to bite off little pieces, little pieces, little pieces that'll eventually get us to where we want to be. But I think we're going to have to have that long-range vision.
Right.
As opposed to the idea that we would come up with a new master facility plan, and then in a couple of years be going to some big referendum to do some multimillion dollar thing. I don't want people to get that idea.
No.
We have, we know that with our, with our videoing of all this, we do have several people watching, more than just what's in the audience. I think it's important that, that people, people understand what we're really talking about here. And so, I don't want anybody getting, getting all excited about the fact that District 99 is talking about some sort of huge, huge project. And we're not. What we are looking at is, is how we can best meet the needs of our students today and going forward. And we, we know for a fact that there's things about our, our district buildings, as I think you alluded to, in terms of how we teach today and best practices. White and Company, the architects who have been helping us out with a lot of things, have great expertise in this, I know, I've had some conversation with them. And it's really kind of exciting. And there might be some things that we can do to our schools in the short term here that can start getting us.
That are affordable?
Yeah, that are affordable, and we can start to accomplish some of these things. And then, as we, as we maybe get some of these things done, and we see the success of that, we can start to build some of the, some of the community support we're after to maybe, if there are larger things to get done, maybe we can get some support for that down the road. So, I think this is an excellent idea, embarking upon a master facility plan. It's something that we really haven't, haven't done since, and it might remind me.
1990s, probably.
Yeah. And so, as much as people might look at what's, you know, the improvements we made at North several years ago and things we've done at South, that was actually quite a while ago now. And so, it is time to, to look at these things again. And so, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I support the idea.
Any other comments or questions? Sounds like we have, I personally support the idea. I think it's great to take, to dream large. Do you have a guesstimate about how much just the dream, just in general?
I don't, I can't talk, I couldn't talk about cost. I couldn't talk about timeline tonight. I really came to talk about the idea.
Right.
And, and, you know, to articulate the idea so people understood what we were doing and where we're going. And, and I think that was successful. So, we'll come back later with more detail.
Sounds good.
Maybe we'll get new comment plans.
Freedom of, freedom of information requests?
We had two freedom of information requests over the past month. One was partially fulfilled by Mr. Stalen, one was completely fulfilled by Mr. Stalen.
Okay. Any other, anything else you'd like to say, Mark, in general?
Nothing else, Dr. Cupka.
Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of the board wishes to like, wishes to discuss?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I guess no, there's no, but nothing else to discuss?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Joanne?
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Papinato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Did you want to make any comments on the consent agenda?
I do not want to make comments on the consent agenda. Very satisfied with the consent agenda.
I'm glad to hear that. Okay, recommend, agenda item number eight, recommendations for action, approval of food service agenda?
Mr. Stalen, you want to take this on, so I don't have to comment about it?
Absolutely. Well, just briefly, this is the fourth renewal of our contract with Aramark, meaning that next year we'll be going back out for a press for proposals and of all the larger food service providers that serve schools. No one's delighted with, with every food service, every school.
Let alone our kids.
There's, there's been, a lot of talk through all the business manager networks about the healthy, healthier food content and the unfortunate byproduct of that, that a lot of that food is thrown away by students. You have to serve it to them, they have to take it, or you can't claim the meal for them. And they take it and they see it go right into the garbage. And so, unfortunately, that happens. But there are, I mean, as a state nutrition expert said, we have, but we hope that over time, the kids repeatedly seeing it, they will stop throwing it away, and we're like, "I love you." But this is just a simple renewal. The contract, when we initially set it up, five years ago, it was, it was set up that it was tied to CPI. We've done this with our contracts. And so, last year, they had a 1.7% increase, because that was our revenue stream for 2012, '13. Next year, our revenue stream, according to CPI, even though that's not identical to our revenue stream, it closely mirrors it, is 3%, and that's the increase that they're entitled to. And they did provide documentation to me to assure us that they have support that more than exceeds 3% in terms of their costs, largely in part because of the additional, I mean, healthy foods are actually more expensive than non. And so, they are incurring some, some more, more costs related to this program that basically have to, have to do to stay in it, so. But we're recommending approval of a renewal of the contract. It's a fairly routine thing for us at this point.
I think I read that we're, we're having to raise the price for, from 235 to 250 for, for paying customers, right?
Right, a year ago. Last year, recall, we, we made a first step in a two-step process to do this. The state reimburses at a certain level, and we were actually charging less than what we were getting from the state for our paying customers. And so, they needed us to raise that price so that they weren't reimbursing us more than what our paying customers.
So, we raise, we raise the price, and then they get to pay us less on this side.
Well, if we didn't raise the price, they would pay us less. They would reduce the amount, the difference between $2.50 and, at that time, $2.25 for some lunches.
I thought that the fact that we're raising to 250 actually does have an impact on the other side, in that because we're, we're collecting more money, that we get less in terms of reimbursement?
No. What it does is if we, if we didn't increase it, they would reduce reimbursement to us, because we have to at least meet how much they're reimbursing us.
Okay.
And so, if we didn't raise it to, to what they're giving us now, they would reduce their reimbursements to the level that we're charging our, our full-priced students. And we do have a significant number of students that are on the free and reduced program, and so, it would have an impact on us financially if they started to pare that down. And, and it, for the, the students that pay, the $2.50 really is still quite a bargain. It's much lower than many schools. We were just trying to keep it as low as possible, you know? We always try and promote that the kids eat at school, eat healthy meals, but, and not all do, but we try and keep the cost as low as possible. So, we're putting it at the minimum that the state would allow us to put it at to, to maintain their standards.
Okay. Mark, I, not about this contract, I'm thinking about next, next contract. Is, is there some things that we can do to be, I, I realize that we have state and federal mandates for what we serve and all that. Are there some things that we can do to maybe even go further with that and work somehow to get a healthier, even product out there? I guess, I guess what drives me absolutely crazy is I see the, the macaroni and cheese that I have to wear sunglasses for, because I know that there's no cheese in it. You know, I mean, it's just.
Well, you mean, to become healthier or to become more appealing? Because those are necessarily on the same path.
Well, I, I think, I think, no, I realize that. But, but sometimes if we can, you know, work a little bit differently to entice our children to eat healthier and, you know, get, because, because let's face it, you know, getting in on the, on the ground floor of all of that, it teaches them a lifestyle for their entire life. And, and I think, I understand where all of the mandates are going and all that, but I'm just wondering, is there some way that we can work with our students and work with our, maybe our, yeah, whatever vendor we choose, but also with our, maybe our health classes or something to start getting the kids involved in, in making healthier choices or healthier atmosphere? I don't know. I don't know what it is, but it.
There already is some coordination, and actually, they do a lot of things with, by putting calories out there, different things so kids are more aware. I think time will help. All of the vendors and all of business managers, and they all represent all the different major vendors, I think it'll take them a couple of years to actually get the new requirements into different menus that, that meet that middle ground where kids will actually eat it and enjoy it. What we're seeing now is the kids either don't go and pick up the, these healthy items, and they just go to à la carte and avoid the system altogether and spend more money. And, and it's, and so, you have to find a medium that the kids enjoy the food. And I think, we'll take, everyone's saying, "Give us a couple of years, we'll refine it." One company will find a, a menu item, and then the others will pick up on it eventually, because they, and soon, I think we'll have a broader menu for the students that are healthy, but also things they enjoy to eat. You know, and that's, that's the toughest thing, kids, you know.
You know, I just, I just feel like sometimes, you know, when I've gone over and saw the lunches, it's like, oh, you know, it's, it's.
But that's the issue. You mean, if you're saying you're making more appetizing, you're going to make it.
Well, you know, I guess I, I'm looking at it. My daughter always came home and said, you know, "Why couldn't we have a salad bar and soup for lunch?" You know? And that's not an, an option, or hasn't been.
It is, it is. And it, but it is, you know, there are, and the two schools are different. So, North and South have had issues where, because the cafeteria at South is much more robust, it's much, there's stations, they can do things like that, they can do poppers, they can do all these different little things that keep the kids, you know.
Excited, yeah.
Yeah, and North is a smaller, has a smaller system. And so, it's, it's harder for them to do different breakouts there. But they, they do have a create your own salad, make your own salad.
They, they have that now?
They have.
It's been a few years.
Because you know what they do, is they, they go and if you, if they, they get like a month where they're averaging six salads a day, they might pull that line.
Well, yeah, you know what, you know what? I, I think that that's a good idea, you know, to, to keep it fresh is to move things around, you know, you know. I'm not advocating to have it, like, when I was growing up, we had one meal, that was it. You either took it or you didn't take it, you know?
Line, one meal.
Also about choice, I mean, there is Tupperware, I mean, they have invented Tupperware and can bring it to school.
Right.
If the, you know, if the parents choose to, to send their kids with money, the kids want it, that's their choice.
That's right.
So, we have to be, you know, enterprising enough to make it appealing. If, if we're meeting the bottom line, we're paying our workers and everything, great. If not, let the kids bring whatever they want. Talk to them.
Well, yeah.
It's a free country.
Yeah.
It's certainly at these early stages, the state has been really scrutinizing the portions, and if you don't, if you, if you serve too many carrots, they actually criticize you. If you serve too many, they, they measure the cupfuls, they measure the ladlefuls, it's the onsite visits are horrendous. And, and so, there's not a lot of leeway. You know, it used to be that you used to pile on the french fries and the kids would love it, and now you almost have to count them. I mean, you have to, you have to measure them out very precisely and make sure you don't put too many french fries, and, you know, and it's.
Too many carrots?
And so, that's all the positive things for, for the kids, in terms of their health, but it's, it may not be the most appealing to them. And so, a lot of them do go bring stuff from home or, you know, what we can do when we do the RFP is make those inquiries, what have you done, what healthy choices are successful?
Right.
And we'll do site visits, and we have, you know, we do have some options to see if one of these other companies are further ahead. But the bottom line is, is with the state and the Fed requires to take the lowest responsible bidder. And so, we might be able to learn from that experience and bring it to whoever does become the low bidder.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe, you know, experiment. Do, try, you know, be, have them be willing to try things and see if they work, and if they don't work.
I think they are. I think they're all trying to experiment, because it's in their best interest to serve those meals, because they get the reimbursement, too. So, they're, they're motivated to do that, and it's very frustrating to them to have to restrict the menu to things that the kids don't really enjoy.
If we find a lot of green beans in the garbage, well, then we won't serve green beans.
But that's the problem. We still have to serve them.
In the interest of time?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to authorize a continuation of the food service contract with Aramark for the 2013-2014 school year, and authorize the administration to sign the contract renewal agreement for food management services, nonprofit food service program.
And I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, was that Rick?
Yes.
Second. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Papinato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Awarded bid copy your paper?
Marty?
As you can see, we're not a paperless business yet.
No.
But we're on the right track. Year after year, we've been reducing our, our paper needs. And this year, not only are we reducing the amount of paper that we need to purchase, but for first time in several years, the price of paper has come down. And, and so, we have a significant reduction in our cost of paper from the past couple of years. Each of the bidders we've, we've worked with in the past, and we're happy with any one of them. The low bidder gave us an incomplete bid. He missed, oh, eight or 10 different types of paper. Didn't miss them, he couldn't provide them, I guess, and so, just skipped over it. And this is an all or nothing bid. So, our low bidder is, Paper 101 is actually the second lowest bid, but it's a complete bid. And we've worked with Paper 101 in the past and been very happy with their, their service. And we'd recommend that the board award a contract to the low acceptable bidder as indicated in the recommendation.
I move that we accept the bid with Paper 101 from Iowa, the amount of $68,264.47.
Second.
I have one question. We have been very happy with them, and we are buying in bulk. Is this, is this one item, though, that maybe in the future, we could combine with either District 58 or something, that we would be buying it, and then, you know, they would deliver it, but it would even be at even a lower cost?
Yes, it's, I, I believe the state bid has paper, we beat that price. There are other cooperatives, and that's, that, that we could also join, and we beat that price. We could form our own cooperative and do such. Haven't had that conversation with 58 or any of our other elementary districts, but it's certainly something we could look into in the future. This is one of those items where the price goes down as the quantity goes up, so.
That's why I asked.
Because of delivery, for the most part.
I support that idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
I think what Marty said is it's never seemed too important, since our bids are always lower anyway. But if we can offer that same low bid to other districts, that would be very, it would be really positive.
That would be following with our process that we started a number of years ago when we started consolidating our bids, so Jim or Mark.
There you go, Jim.
Take a look at that in the future.
Good idea.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second?
We did.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Papinato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
It's moved. Okay, award of bid, South High Swimming Pool Plaster Repairs.
Mr. Schock again?
I think Jim is going to handle this one.
Sure, Marty will. So, we, we had bid documents for the South High School Lap Tank. What happened, and I'll talk about this in a minute, that was not on our capital projects list that I presented in November. Delamination was noticed in the lap tank, some extensive, we feel that once it's drained, it's still full, will result in a full 100% replastering of that pool. So, we still know why it failed, so once we drain it, we'll have a better understanding of that to, to make sure that doesn't reoccur. So, we had four people pick up bid proposals. We received two from Mid-America Pool Renovation and Aqua Pure Enterprises. As I said, the cost for this will come out of the capital project, but under the line item of large maintenance projects, so that'll cover the cost of this. So, with that said, we urge the board to accept the low bidder, Mid-America Pool Renovation for $93,915 for plaster repairs.
Questions?
I do.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we were expecting 10 to 15 years of useful life, and we do put a lot of money in our pools.
Questions?
I do. Because, you know, we were expecting 10 to 15 years of useful life, and we do put a lot of money in our pools. These are, I mean, high maintenance items. Do we go back to who plastered it? Is there some sort of reimbursement that we can get? Is it, is it something that we did?
One year?
Let me, let me answer that question because I was involved with the, those projects back in the, in 2006, '07, and '08. Jim wasn't here at that time or wasn't involved. This was the first of the replastering pools that we did. We did all four tanks over a couple of year period of time. And we had some problems with this contractor and he has not been allowed to bid in the district since. We had a one-year parts and labor, material and labor warranty. And because of some of the difficulties with him, we had an extended warranty of five years. We're beyond that extended warranty. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't stop us from pursuing a solution that might involve the manufacturer or the installer. We simply don't know why the failure occurred because there's still water in the tanks. When we drain the tanks, get in there, we might be able to determine why the delamination. Could be an installation problem, it could have been a material problem, it could have been a, you know, a product failure, we're just not sure. The other three tanks are holding up just fine and meeting our expectations. So at that time, we would determine what the problem is if we can, and then we would look at our options for reimbursement or recouping some of our costs.
Right, what about even a possibility of like even insurance? Like an insurance, a claim or something?
That is...
Is the claim going to work?
In fact, I believe I checked into insurance on it and this one did not, does not qualify. We've had a couple of insurance claims in the past couple of years, but typically those are caused by nature, that kind of thing. Wear and tear does not...
I just was kind of reaching, then you're striking of another, yeah.
Yeah, I think that question came up before and I looked into it and was told that our policy does not cover that, but I'll make sure of that. And if it does cover it, we would look into that possibility too, sure.
The same contractor do the other three?
I was going to ask...
Three different contractors because it's low bid work. So there were three different contractors that handled four tanks on different bids in different years.
We'll be happy about that then, possibly. So whatever, whatever the cause that we discover with this, in terms of the premature failure, we don't necessarily have to expect that with the other, other applications.
Right. There, and we, after that first year, we also changed the product. We weren't happy with the product either.
Very good, okay.
And, and so the product that we've specified for the last, the last three tanks in this one is a known, a known quality.
So it almost sounds like the fact that we've had some issue here isn't, isn't a huge surprise, given the experience with it.
That's very disappointing, but it's not totally surprising.
Four tanks, three contractors, they didn't do another tank, right? They just did the one?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Did I hear that we were one year short, one year out of the extended warranty?
Yes.
On that tank?
We had a five or a six-year warranty, yes.
And now we're out?
Yeah.
Is there any warranty with this work?
Pardon me?
Is there any warranty with this work?
Yes, yes, this standard one-year parts and labor. We could have a, we negotiated the extended warranty on the other one because of the way the project went together and the things we observed the contractor doing that wasn't acceptable. And so we had a feeling at that time that this may not...
Appropriate.
But typically, if there's a problem, it's going to show itself soon rather than, sooner rather than later. But standard warranty for all of the tanks and all of this kind of work is one-year part, material and labor. And to ask for an extended warranty is expensive. Very expensive, actually.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? So moved. Second?
I'll second it, as it's presented by the administration.
Joanne, can you call them?
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Papanato?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye.
Old business, any old business to bring up?
You know what, I just, I just want to say, thank you to Marty and that for the, the new air handling at South High.
Yes.
Graduation was fabulous. Usually when it's indoors there, we're sweating to death. I think all of us were very comfortable at South High. So thank you very much for that air handling procedure, whatever it was. And I hope it's able to be done at North.
It is next year.
Because...
We, we do have a project at North that began two weeks ago to replace the air handling system at North High. Main Jim should give us similar results.
Because I'll tell you, the difference was just incredible between South and North. So I just want to say thank you. Good work.
And I'd just like to say thank you in general.
Yes, yes.
We wish you the best.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we are just honored to have worked with you and...
You're going out with a great deal of glory.
There's a lot to be proud of, your career here.
Yes.
And we wish you the best as you go forward.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other comments? Reception of, second reception of visitors? Anybody wish to address the board on any issue? Hearing non-communication announcements, Keith, Lend?
Just the last Lend meeting was last Wednesday and Dr. McDonald sent all the board members his report, mostly that the legislative session ended with no major changes on behalf of school districts. General Assembly has been called into a special session, I believe, starting Wednesday by the governor of Illinois, and their primary concern on the agenda is pensions. So they've been in negotiations, if you've been looking at news reports about trying to hammer out a deal, there is nothing, but I would, would urge our board members to continue to keep a watch on any updates from PEG Agnos.
Thank you, Julia.
A question for Keith or in Mark, Lend is still at the table? Are we, or are the, is there still any bargaining done with us or is it all?
I think Glenn is on top of the information, but my sense from PEG Agnos is...
They're just waiting.
It's very closed.
Right.
The negotiations are in the purview of a handful of people.
Yeah.
It's not very public, it's not, and frankly, nobody knows what's going to happen.
Right.
So it's, it's not the kind of situation where it's easy to be in, in the loop or at the table or whatever, simply because this is such a closed system at this point.
Well, a quick report from SACID. We did have our election of officers at the last meeting and essentially the, kind of the same officers and the same committee appointments. I continue to serve on the finance committee and on governance. We continue with negotiations with the certified staff. And just, we did have a certificate of occupancy for the transition program of SACID, which they remodeled for months and months and months in Westmont. But I know there's still some interest in, in this, in our District 99's new building. And as you know, both programs are growing, both transition programs are really growing exponentially. That just about covers it for SACID.
Another one, humanities?
And then we are, the Humanities Council is meeting this Wednesday and we're meeting at WBEZ, the, because, partially because there's been a joint project with Humanities Council and WBEZ. They're working together on a radio series on business and the humanities. What a great combination. And as you know, the, the charter for the Humanities Council is to keep the humanities alive, so to speak, and keep public interest alive in it and help people to understand that humanities are a very broad topic that we still need to be very much aware of and to include, of course, in our education process. So I'll tell you more about that meeting next meeting.
Thank you.